Having reached a quorum, I bring this meeting to order. We have a, we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Julianne Sheehan and Maeve Nugent from the Girl Scouts and Jeanne Fiore and Molly Conlin from the Ladies Auxiliary, American Legion.
Do I sneak this in now?
Uh, wait, no, one just, oh, one just want in though. Right? All right, so we have a kind of an unusual circumstance. Diane Dunphy, our town clerk, has gone off to her son's graduation. And in order to backfill her position, we're required to have an election. So we can do this one or two ways, and I'm suggesting we do the easy way, where I would open nominations and someone will nominate Peggy Burrell, because Peggy Burrell is kind enough to offer her services. She did the job for a number of years. The difficult way is when I open nominations, we get somebody, we get Peggy Burrell and another person, then we have to hand out ballots, we have to swear in tellers, you will have to fill out ballots, then the selectmen would have to count the ballots, and we would go through a long process. And I can tell you from the three weeks that I've been studying to be town moderator, the town clerk job is way more important and way more difficult than what I'm doing. And I don't recommend anybody take an attempt at doing it. So with that being said, do I have a nomination for Margaret Burrell?
Yes.
Seconded, seconded by Mr. O'Reilly. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the nominations. Let's see. Now we need to vote on, on making Peggy our temporary clerk. I don't know if we need to do that by, oh, I'm sorry. I need a written ballot. So, Mr. Thibault, do you have a written ballot? Our selectmen will cast one ballot. Oh, I need, yeah, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve Peggy Burrell or Margaret Burrell as the position of temporary clerk.
Yes.
Please, thank you. Tony's more versed at this than I am.
One ballot and have that one ballot be counted. So what we're going to ask for is a motion to allow for the select board chair to cast a one and only ballot for the one and only nominee.
Wait.
And this could be a voice vote.
This will be a voice vote. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Seeing and hearing none, thank you. The motion passes. My first motion.
By ballot election, Margaret Peggy Burrell has been elected temporary town clerk for this annual town meeting.
Thank you. We have one ballot. Margaret Burrell, temporary town clerk. Want to read the warrant? Now that we, oh, I need to sway you in. Raise your right hand. Let's see. I thought it was on that page. I'll get better at this, I swear. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of temporary town clerk to which you have been elected?
I do.
Thank you. So now our town clerk will read the warrant return.
The Constable's Return of Service. Town of Nahat, Essex, Massachusetts, May 1st, 2025. This is when it would have been posted. On the date written above, I have served this warrant by posting and attested printed copies thereof at the town hall and such other places the selectmen deem appropriate, but not less than three in each precinct. That would be the Nahat Police Station, the Nahat Fire Station, and the Nahat Public Library. Signed by Robert Scanlon, Constable of the Town of Nahat.
Thank you. I'm both honored and excited that you elected me as your presiding officer over town meeting. I've studied and prepared for today's meeting over the last three weeks, and what became clear to me is what we do here in town meeting as we write the history of Nahat. What is debated and decided at town meeting, whether good or bad, will steer our town. And I hope that being part of Nahat history excites you as it does me. I learned that town meeting requires four things: the warrant, which sets the date and the time and the agenda; the clerk to document the official records; myself, the moderator, to run the proceedings; and a quorum, which is you. And while the moderator and the town clerk can be substituted, you can't as a quorum. So thank you for being here and doing your part to make us write the history of Nahat. Having been a recent member of the Finance Advisory Committee, I understand the hard work that goes into preparing for today. We owe a huge debt of gratitude to the Finance Advisory Committee for their work, and also to Diane Dunphy, Tony Barletta, Allison Nieto, Kristen Taylor, Scott Greaves, and Peggy Burrell, along with the rest of our town hall employees that help make this town meeting happen. As the moderator, I also have the honor of appointing volunteers to several committees. This town needs and runs on the work that volunteer committees do, so please step up and volunteer. Reach out to the town hall or me directly, and we can find a committee or a board that you can help with. It's much more helpful and productive to volunteer on a committee than sit back and comment or criticize on social media. So today, or I'm sorry, so after the election, Dave Conlin, my predecessor, and I got together. We met so that Dave could try and pass along some of the infinite knowledge that he has in the role of moderator, as moderator. He had with him a large plaque that hangs in the town hall with all the names of the citizens of the year prior. He had some great stories and to tell about the dedication and the achievements that people have done on that plaque. As Dave was leaving, I commented about his 34 years of achievement as town moderator, and he told me he'd also served on the Finance and Advisory Committee for eight years and another eight years on the Solid Waste Removal Committee. I'm not much of a math guy, but I quickly figured out that Dave had 50 years of service to Nahat, 50 years. And with that, I would like to award Nahat Citizen of the Year 2025 to David G. Conlin.
I was going to tell you about all of the 34 people that are on the plaque and what wonderful things they've done for the town, but I have to echo exactly what Peter said. You are the key here, and thank you all for coming, supporting these wonderful folks and these wonderful folks. And give him a break or two, he's going to do great as moderator. Thank you all, I'm starting to tear up, so I'm going to go sit down and thank you.
All right, Dave, don't sit down. Dave, don't sit down.
Stay up here for a second. Our state legislators, Representative Sean Reed and Senator Crichton, also put together some citations as well for you that read in recognition, to Dave Conlin, in recognition over three decades of dedicated service to the Town of Nahat, serving as the town moderator. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good, fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. And this is signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and State Rep Sean Reed. As well, we have a citation from Senator Crichton, which reads the same, and it's signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, as well as Senator Crichton. And then lastly, the town hall, or the Town of Nahat, also wanted to present you this plaque with a gavel attached to it.
Thank you, Senator Crichton. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
I got some big shoes to fill. All right, moving along, we're going to go to the Charles Kelly Award.
Each year, we award the Charles Kelly Scholarship to a Nahat resident who has been accepted to a two- or four-year accredited college. The Charles Kelly Scholarship was established by the residents of Nahat and the Nahat Board of Selectmen in memory of Charles Kelly, who served for 33 years as selectman. Charles Kelly started his political career when he was elected to the school committee in 1950 at the age of 22. He was also instrumental in the planning and building of the Johnson Elementary School. When someone asked Mr. Kelly about his length of service, he was quoted as saying, "I'm not out to break records. I'm in politics because I love it, and I hope I'm able to do something for my town." Each year, we ask applicants to answer the question, "What does community service mean to you?" This year's recipient has shown us that community service means to him and how it was instilled in him at an early age. He has been involved in a number of service activities, including volunteering with the MIAA Unified Athletics that helps athletes with disabilities by keeping time, tracking scores, setting up facilities, and most importantly, encouraging them to compete with confidence and pride. He has also been involved with the Strawberry Festival, helping at his local church, volunteering at youth football clinics, and tutoring fellow students in math. With all of these programs and activities, he has learned that community service isn't just about giving your time, but it's about caring enough to invest in others. This year's recipient is a graduate of Swambskett High School and will be attending St. Lawrence University this fall. We are pleased to award this year's Charles Kelly Scholarship to Joseph Marino.
Dennis Treest and Anna Manzano come up and do the American Legion Scholarships.
I'm Dennis Treest, I'm the commander of the American Legion post here in Nahat, and Anna Manzano is the chairman of the scholarship committee, and Dan McMacan is the former commander of the American Legion post here in Nahat, and I'm glad they were able to join me today. Can I ask Riley McGuire and Cameron Angersbach to come forward? It gives me great pleasure to meet our scholarship winners and thank them personally for their essays which ask them to answer the question, "What does patriotism mean to me?" Our scholarship committee found all the essays to be very good, and it made us think that there was some hope for this next generation. It was difficult to find the two best essays, but in reading and rereading them, there were two that stood out. If I can paraphrase, the essays written by Riley McGuire and Cameron Angersbach focused on how patriotism is not just something you do on holidays, but rather, it's something you do every day. Work hard, give back to the community, lend a hand, and use your voice. Talk about the difficult topics, answer the tough questions, vote, be true to your family, community, and nation. Now, that's patriotism. Riley's going to Wake Forest and Cameron's going to UMass Amherst, and we're happy to give them a little money to help them on their way. And Anna, would you please do that?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Riley and Cameron, well done.
Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Thibault, our chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to come up.
So, news travels really fast in Nahat. I'm sure you're aware that Tony Barletta will soon leave us for new challenges in the town of Manchester by the Sea. Tony said he wanted to speak to us before we begin our business this afternoon, but I told him he had to wait for me first. I was very nervous when elected last year, and I still am. There is a lot for a new selectman to learn. Tony immediately suggested that we meet with every Wednesday to review town issues, past, present, and future. I can tell you, the list is overwhelming, but Tony demonstrated a thorough knowledge of each and every one of them. His meetings with me were nothing special for him. He does the same thing with all three selectmen. So, thank you, Tony, for the many hours you have patiently spent with me, and the thousands of hours that you have dedicated toward managing the Town of Nahat since you became our town manager in 2018.
I just wanted an opportunity to thank you all. I, you know, I'll be brief, because we have a lot of business to cover today, but I, you know, really, it's what the Town of Nahat has done for me is really what I look at more so than the accomplishments that we've had over the last, you know, six or seven You know, Nahat's a very unique place. You know, you grow up in Nahat, you move on for school, you move on for family reasons, you know, you go, you leave town, and you get introduced to people who are not from Nahat. And within seconds, they know that you're from Nahat, and you are Nahat. Like, it's, it's a unique place, and no matter who I've met, they've always talked about, like, what is this crazy town that you are from? Why do you love it so much? What is it like? Why is it, you know, it defines who you are, really. And so it's always defined me, but now it defines me on a different level, you know, so to, for it to be such a big part of my professional career, to, for you all to have given me the opportunity to trust me and, and help me grow as a professional, it really, you know, means the world to me, will always be a part of me. And I just want to thank, you know, specifically the selectmen, past and present, you know, T, Richie, Enzo, Mark, Josh, Rob, Gene, and Pat, for all of your trust. And of, and of course, you know, to the staff, there's too many to really say by name, and the volunteers. Everybody who is involved in this town is extremely dedicated to doing what's best for this town and doing what's best for you, the residents. These jobs, you know, are tough, it is, it's a hard job, but everybody comes in with, you know, a goal of working together and, and getting what's done, you know, getting things done that's best for the town. So with that being the basis of what's in front of us, I think we can, you know, continue to see success here. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to move on because there's, you know, you have to leave something behind, but, you know, Nahat will never be left behind, it'll, it'll always be my home, I won't be far, my family's still here, I'll still see you all around. So just thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your support, for all your trust, and for giving me this opportunity.
Bing items, and then we'll get down to business. So there are non-registered voters in the hall, and I need to list them off. Tony Barletta, Tim Furlong, Robert LeBeau, John Coulon, Allison Nieto, Jeff Blake, Zachary Taylor, Jessica Mancini, Joseph Marino, Stephanie Farrell, Dennis Treest, Julianne Sheehan, Matthew Skydell, and Maeve Nugent. If you plan on leaving, please leave your clicker. If you plan on leaving and coming back, go through the left door at the rear of the church, yeah, rear of the hall. Give your clicker to Carol Nelson, and then come back in that same door. The Lions Club, as they traditionally do, is selling hot dogs down in the Tiffany Room, and we have new closed caption, which is to help enhance town meeting and help with ADA compliance. I think we're ready to move on. Mr. McMacan, the annual resolution.
I move that the town adopt the following resolution, resolve that the town adopt the following rule governing motions, amendments made during the 2025 annual town meeting, whereas without an override, the amount to be raised by taxation, as recommended by the Advisory and Finance Committee, is expected to be $13,205,120 for fiscal year 2026. And whereas Proposition 2 and 1/2 makes it unlawful for the town to levy taxes in excess of $13,205,120 for the fiscal year 2026 without a vote to override the limit. Therefore, in order to ensure compliance with the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, the participants of the 2025 annual town meeting shall require that anyone introducing a motion at this meeting which would result in increasing an appropriation above the amount permissible under the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2 be obliged to specify the alternative means of funding by giving names of other articles or accounts excluding the Reserve Fund, Employee Benefits, Debt Service, OPEB Trust Fund, and Stabilization Fund in the, in the amount by which the appropriated or recommended amount for such account or articles must be reduced in order to fund the requested increase.
I forgot to do is to test the clickers, and as some of you may know, Marblehead had a huge issue with their clickers. So Jessica, if you, we're going to put up a test question. It was going to be the Celtics, but unfortunately, that ended last night horribly. Okay, so vote. Does anybody think that they're, that they didn't see a green light on their clicker? We're good? Do you want to do a second one? Sure. When the timer comes up is when you want to click. One is, is it A and? One A, yes, and one B is no? Two B, I'm sorry, is no. Yes, vote. It is a great day for town meeting. We have a motion on the floor, so we're going to move forward with that motion, and that is the annual resolution. So please vote. And we have a unanimous, yeah, not a unanimous, but 97 yes, five no, the motion carries. Ms. Beatty.
Good to see so many of you here. This is Article 1, and I move that this article be indefinitely postponed, as there are currently no FY 2025 transfers.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. We do need to vote, so vote. Ms. Beatty.
So, two in a row. So for Article Two, which is prior year bills, I move that this article be indefinitely postponed, as there are currently no prior year bills.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Let's vote. One oh-seven yes, two no. The motion carries. Ms. Raton.
I move that Article Eight, Section Five, Subsection D of the bylaws is amended for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2025, by replacing the existing section as shown in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on pages thirty-eight through forty-two, with the correction of a typographical error on page forty. Police sergeant EMT salary should be seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-four and fifteen cents, rather than seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four and fifteen cents.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Let's vote. One hundred yes for no. Motion carries.
I move that the salaries of the following elected officials are fixed for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2025. Selectmen, one dollar. Constable, fifty dollars. Assessor, one dollar. In-town clerk, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Vanderslice. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One oh-eight yes, five no. Motion carries. Mr. Bell.
I move to indefinitely postpone action on Article Five.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty.
The Advisory and Finance Committee Book states that the committee recommends this article because the town will now fund the water meter installation program through the MWRA's zero percent interest loan program. However, upon drafting the motion for this article, legal counsel advised the town that rescinding the original article is not necessary. Instead, town meeting can indefinitely postpone action on this article and approve the transfer of funding from the water sewer meter capital account, where the funding has been placed after Town Meeting 2024, to the new accounts as outlined in motions at this town meeting. You will see these transfers in upcoming motions for Article Seven, the Water and Sewer Enterprise, Article Fifteen, the Water DPW Capital, and Article Twenty-three E, Library Repairs. The town will move forward with funding the water meter installation project through the MWRA borrowing program, which will allow the town to complete the project more quickly and comprehensively.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One fifteen yes, four no. Motion carries. Mr. Bell.
For Article Six, I move that the town transfer the sum of seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars from free cash, fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus, and raise and appropriate fourteen million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, as may be necessary to defray town charges for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2025, for a total of fifteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty, three-hundred, thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, as written in the omnibus budget on pages twenty-eight to thirty-three, except for the total intergovernmental on page thirty-three.
Seconded by Ms. Raton.
So we're going to do something a little different this year. At previous town meetings, a member of the Advisory and Finance Committee had to read each budget line and recommend the recommended amount by department. This year, we're going to simplify the motion by reading the broader category names and subtotals, as listed on page twenty-eight to thirty-three of the Advisory and Finance Committee Book. After reading each category and amount, please state pass if you would like further discussion on an item within that category. Then, after all the categories and recommended, recommended budget amounts are read, we can return to the pass items for further discussion.
Does everybody understand that? It's a diff, it's a change this year. It's hopefully going to save us some time.
Okay. So, the first category, total general government lines one through thirty-one, one million, five-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars. Anyone want to pass? There is pass.
We have a pass?
Next category, total public safety lines thirty-two to sixty-four, three million, six-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars.
We have a pass?
Next, total education system lines sixty-three to seventy-three, five million, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars.
Do we have any passes?
No, I hear no passes. Next, total public works lines seventy-four to eighty-nine, six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars.
Any passes? None?
Next, total cultural recreation lines ninety to one oh-seven, four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Next, total debt service lines one oh-eight to one ten, one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Do we have a pass?
Next, total other expenses line one fifteen to one twenty-two, three million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Okay, I'll try that again. Total other expenses lines one fifteen to one twenty-two, two million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And then finally, total reserve funds lines one twenty-three to one twenty-four, two-hundred-thousand dollars. So...
We have a, looks like we have a pass under lines one through thirty-one, the total general government. Who passed?
Was there a pass on the first category?
First category?
So what was it?
What was, whoever has the pass, please come up to the microphone and ask their question. No pass? Right. That was, that's the first pass, but no one's speaking on the first pass? Okay.
So then the second category, public safety, was there a pass?
Public safety.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with the appropriation, but I feel that this is a very good time for a tip of the hat and a thank you from the town for the outstanding service we've had from Chief Antrim. Chief Antrim was, must be clairvoyant or just has great judgment, because he took the initiative for us to purchase fire truck two years ago. Since then, there has been charges of antitrust, price fixing, and all kinds of shenanigans in the fire truck industry. And we got in just in time. We saved about fifty percent in at least a year and a half of lead time to get our fire trucks. So Chief Antrim is, is really doing a hell of a job, and I want to say thanks.
Thank you. And we had a third pass under the debt service lines one oh-eight to one ten. Mr. Corangelo. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and your address.
Hello, Ken Corangelo, Eighteen Wellow Road. On this regard to line item one zero nine, the military housing debt service, does this amount, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, is this the last, does this fully pay off the, the loan?
Allison Nieto, I'm the town finance director. So it does, if you remember, there was an original one-point-eight million that was borrowed to purchase the property. That has been fully paid off. The town then borrowed one-point-three million for the demolition of the existing structures. Half of that's been paid off. The seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand that's left is of that borrowing, and it will be paid off in FY twenty-six.
Oh, so I'm sorry, is that a different number than the...
I'm sorry, is it seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand? Sorry.
No, no, I said, just wanted to agree. So that means that's it?
That's it for the borrow... Exactly.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twelve yes, three no. Motion passes. Mr. Vanderslice.
So, Article Seven. I move that the following sums be appropriated for the operation of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2025. Salaries, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Expenses, one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. Capital outlay, eighty-six thousand dollars. Debt, one million, five-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Emergency reserve uncollectible, forty thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, for a total of three million, three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. And that two million, ninety-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars is to be funded from the Water and Sewer Department receipts for said purposes. Sixteen thousand dollars is to be appropriated from the Water and Sewer retained earnings. Seventy thousand dollars be transferred from the Water Sewer Main Capital Account. And one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars in Water and Sewer debt costs is to be raised through property taxes, less two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars in indirect costs funded from the Water and Sewer Department receipts to be transferred from the general fund.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin.
And a side note, seems like ages ago now, but Article Five, where we had definitely postponed and said money would reappear later, the seventy-five thou, sorry, seventy thousand dollars that was released under, or not, well, released, air quotes, seventy thousand of it appears here.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One fifteen yes, eight no. Motion carries. Mr. Vanderslice.
Article Eight. I move that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from retained earnings in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for paving, including all costs incidental or related thereto.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One fifteen yes, two no. Motion carries. Mr. McMackin.
Article Nine. I move that the following sums be appropriated for the operation of the Rubbish Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning one July, 2025. Salaries, sixty-five, sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Expenses, five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars, for a total of the fund being six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. And that amount, six-hundred-and-fifty-four, three-seventy-nine, is to be funded from the Rubbish Department receipts for said purposes.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One seventeen yes, three no. Motion carries. Mr. McMackin.
We're making some great progress. We're already up to Article Ten. Compost area, majority vote. I move that the sum of thirty-three thousand dollars U.S. be appropriated from retained earnings in the Rubbish Enterprise Fund for the costs associated with the maintenance of the compost area, including all costs incidental or related thereto.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Discussion?
Brendan Bronnik Olstead, Two Summer Street. I guess the first question, I know in the past we've had to pay disposal fees for the compost area. Out of the thirty-three thousand, is there a sense of, what's the percentage? Is the disposal fee, or how much we were paying on disposal of the material?
See, that's a very good question. Do we have that break out, Tony?
A hundred percent would be the answer. So this fund, these, this helps us fund basically transferring the yard waste material that we collect down the compost facility. It also helps us transfer some of the legacy material that's been there for a while. So it allows us to do our annual operation and kind of chip away at some of that other material that's been there.
All right. I guess the follow-up question is, I guess is there any actions or recommendations on how we could better manage it, or how to segregate the material that we're getting to try to lower the, you know, our annual costs associated with getting disposed of it?
Well, it's, it's the compost initiative, which, as you are aware, is somewhat new and really developing well. Our, to, it sounds almost as though your question is related to the mixed municipal solid waste recycling effort, which has been ongoing.
No, 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 strictly time on the complex. Like, we're spending thirty-three thousand a year. So is there actions we could take that are going to lower the annual costs? You know, if it's something, you know, I don't know, like, you, you work in mulching or...
So, the town did study at one point, actually using the compost facility as a compost facility. And what it would take to manage that and turn it into valuable material that could potentially generate revenue for the town was explored. However, there's a cost to the town for actually taking on that project that we, you know, simply can't afford currently. So now what we do is, it's more of a transfer station. And our goal is to, the, the real goal is to eliminate all that legacy material that's there and really have it as just an annual operation, moving, you know, yard waste that comes in on an annual basis out. Really, the more we fund, the faster we can accomplish that goal. But we're trying to live within, you know, the financial constraints of the town right now. now.
Okay, all right, thank you. I urge citizens to support this measure, so we can continue to get rid of the legacy
Any further discussion? One twenty to one. Motion passes. Article eleven, Ms. Straiton.
I move that the town accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three D, thereby reauthorizing parks and recreation revolving accounts for general recreation, basketball, sailing, tennis, Fourth of July, tot lots, playground equipment, and the youth commission.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Any discussion? One twenty one to one. Motion passes. Article twelve, Ms. Straiton.
I move that the town fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year two thousand twenty six for the revolving funds established in the town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, subsection fifty three E one half. Council on Aging for twenty thousand. Cemetery for twenty thousand. Board of Appeals for ten thousand. And Conservation Commission for twenty thousand.
Seconded by Mr. Vandislice. No discussion? One eighteen to five. Motion passes. Article thirteen.
Article thirteen. I move that the sum of twenty five thousand dollars be appropriated to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, and that this appropriation is funded from free cash.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. Any discussion? One eighteen, yes, three, no. Motion carries. Article fourteen, Mr. Vandislice. This is a two-thirds vote.
These clickers are so efficient, it's difficult to, it's difficult to decide whether to sit back down again or not. Article fourteen. I move that the sum of two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for paving throughout the town, including the payment of all incidental and related costs, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow the sum of two hundred thousand dollars under Mass. General Law's Chapter forty four, section seven, section eight, or, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. Any discussion? One twelve, yes, nine, no. I'm not good at math, as I said, but I, motion carries. Article fifteen, Mr. Bell.
I move that one hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for a Water Sewer DPW truck, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and to fund said appropriation transfer, one hundred thousand dollars from the Water Sewer Meter Capital Account.
Seconded by Ms. Straiton. Any discussion? One fifteen, yes, nine, no. Motion carries. Article sixteen, Mr. Bell.
I move that the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be appropriated to pay costs of studying, maintaining, repairing, and/or replacing water distribution lines and pertinent structures, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount through the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, MWRA, or any other source, under the, under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty four, section eight five, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that in connection with any borrowing through the MWRA, the town is authorized to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the MWRA relative to such borrowing.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Any discussion? This is also a two-thirds vote. One fifteen, yes, eight, noes. Motion passes. Article seventeen, Ms. Warren.
Chapter ninety highway. I move that the town appropriate from available funds received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in fiscal year two thousand twenty six, in order to accomplish certain highway construction and maintenance under the provision of the general law, Chapter ninety, or other state transportation program.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Any discussion? One seventeen, yes, six, no. Motion carries.
Article eighteen, Charter Amendment, Select Board. I move that the town vote to amend the town charter by replacing all references to Board of Selectmen, or Selectmen, with the words Select Board.
Seconded by Mr. Vandislice.
Please note that an amendment to the town charter requires a two-thirds affirmative vote at town meeting, as well as a vote at the subsequent town election.
Mr. Tybo.
This one doesn't cost anything. The Massachusetts Select Board Handbook says the position of selectmen was first used in the sixteen hundreds. In Dorchester. As of two thousand twenty, one hundred and eighty Massachusetts municipalities have changed this to Select Board, to reflect the longstanding participation of both men and women on local government boards. I ask you, is it time for Nahad to make this change?
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. This is a two-thirds, and you will also see this on your ballot in next election. One sixteen, yes, to ten, no. Motion passes. Article nineteen, Ms. Beatty.
This is the Coast Guard housing lot sales. I move the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article twenty of the two thousand twenty one annual town meeting, to now authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell the remaining unsold Coast Guard housing lots, free of limitations on the number of offerings provided. However, that the remaining lots are sold by July one, two thousand twenty nine, subject to the other restrictions set forth in said two thousand twenty one vote.
Seconded by Ms. Straiton. Discussion?
Hi, Ken Corangelo, Eighteen Willow Road. Obviously, once we got into a groove of getting these sold, they went in a matter of months, which was awesome, we got to two left. Why, what's the rationale for having to go four years to sell the additional two?
Thank you, Ken. So, as stated, the original article moved that these properties be sold in two years and two offerings. So the first offering started September of two thousand twenty four. So that timeline, as it stands today, is September of two thousand twenty six. We've already completed our two, we've already put properties out twice. So we've already maxed out our number of offerings authorized by that article, and we'd prefer not to have to ask for additional offerings in the future. We, we're going to just add two more years to two thousand twenty six, but felt it was in the, in the, hopefully, in the very unlikely chance that we don't have those two lots sold by two thousand twenty eight, we moved it to July of two thousand twenty nine to get it on the other side of that spring town meeting. So if we needed to ask for more time, we could just ask you again in the spring of two thousand twenty nine, but hopefully we won't need that. We still have a, we still have a process to go through with one of the properties, and then there's going to be demolition and preparation to put it up for sale. And of course, there's always the unknown of the economy and the housing market. So we just wanted to be, wanted to give ourselves enough time to keep moving forward. But the intent here is to put them up for sale as soon as possible and get this project completed.
Thank you, Tony. Would it not be possible, say we change the date to two thousand twenty seven in this motion? Is there any reason to not ask, is there, are you not able, or is your, yourself are not able to come back at that point and just ask for two more years?
You could, you could. We wanted just to, instead of having to bring it up again, you know, give the town plenty of time to get this done. So far, just as a recap for your question earlier, we've put eleven lots up for sale to this point. Ten of them have sold. We've brought in a little bit over five point one million dollars. As mentioned by Allison earlier, the original loan is paid off, and the second loan will be paid off in July of this year. Once you have all those funds committed to paying off the debt, which is a total of three point one six six million, the town will be, have about one point nine million left over in revenue to the town. So we still have, you know, two more properties to sell, and hopefully if they sell around the same market value, we could be looking at somewhere between two and a half to three million dollars in revenue to the town. So with this motion, we're just looking to, you know, continue that effort. We want to get them sold as fast as possible. But again, I just wanted to be cautious about the time limit. We were, we went back and forth a little bit about, you know, how far out should we go? We don't want to go too far out and take the foot off the gas, so to speak. That's not our intent. So instead of just asking for an extra two years, we gave it a couple extra months to get it on the other side of that spring town meeting in two thousand twenty nine.
Understood. I agree with your comment in terms of you taking the foot off the gas. We're also at the end of what's been a multi-decade process of, you know, trying to dispose of these. So I would, I would make a motion to amend this article, to have the date read July first, two thousand twenty seven, instead of two thousand twenty nine. And to the point, if they're not sold by two thousand twenty seven, you know, always ask for more time, which it seems like four years is an awfully long time to leave this open ended.
So we have an amendment on the?
Mr. Corangelo, so you wish to amend my?
We need it in writing. Do we have a second on the amendment? Second?
There is a second?
So we did have a second in the back. So Mr. Corangelo has made a motion, and it was second to amend. It's to change the date from July first, two thousand twenty nine, to July twen, July first of two thousand twenty seven. I'm going to read the motion as changed, so that everybody hears it. Move, I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article twenty of the two thousand twenty one annual town meeting, and to now authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell the remaining unsold Coast Guard housing lots, free of limitations on the number of offerings, provided however, that the remaining lots are sold by July first, two thousand twenty seven, subject to other restrictions set forth in said two thousand twenty one vote. And we have a second. Any further, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's, let's vote. We're approving the change, correct? So we have forty seven, yes, and seventy three, no, so the motion fails. So we're going to go back to the original motion with the original date of July first, two thousand twenty nine. Any discussion? One oh five, yes, to sixteen, no. Motion passes. Article twenty, Ms. Beatty.
This is climate change preparedness. So I move that the town appropriate the sum of eight hundred and five thousand dollars to fund costs and fees, i.e. professional services, associated with pursuing grants, loans, and similar funding sources for climate change preparedness. Projects on coastal town properties, and/or to serve as required local share for a possible grant award related to climate change preparedness, including the payment of costs including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, seven, or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. Discussion? Can we allow our town administrator? You wanna, okay, go ahead.
I guess, just a general question. Assuming this money is matched with the FEMA money that the town was awarded for the Short Beach work? I guess that's my first question. And the other question was about Short Beach itself, the work that had been scoped. Would this be addressing the access point being the low point, allowing the stormwater surge to be flooding through?
Yes, thank you, Brendan, for asking that question. So, the town meeting approved borrowing authorization for $500,000 for this project a couple of years ago. We came to you and asked for that authorization because including that authorization in our grant application to FEMA made our grant application more competitive. We have not borrowed those funds yet, but we already have the authorization for that. Then, based on the total cost of the project and a seventy-three percent match from FEMA, we have another eight hundred and, uh, five, eight hundred and five thousand dollars to cover our cost of the match. So, with this approval, we'll have our total authorization needed. It's a seventy-three percent match, so our total is about 1.3 million, and the total cost of the project is about 4.8. So, we're getting about $3.5 million from the federal government for the project. And yes, this project is to raise the height of the dune and to improve the access points to help prevent flooding in the future.
Okay, I urge residents to support this measure. It's one of many we need to take at Short Beach and Castle Road in the Little Nahant area. I do encourage, in the future, we consider fully funding a grant rider so we can better seek funds to support our needs. Thank you, thanks.
Any further discussion? This is a two-thirds vote, so seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twenty-four, yes to five, no, motion carries. Ms. Beatty, Article twenty-one.
And this is an article for disabled veterans exemption, a cost of living adjustment. And, well, I'm not supposed to, anyway, disabled veterans is close to my heart. I move that the town vote to accept General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause two-twenty-one, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two, Clause twenty-two A, Clause twenty-two B, Clause twenty-two C, Clause twenty-two E, and Clause twenty-two F, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the previous year, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, for the effect, uh, for the, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July one, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Bell, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a reference, just a correction on the motion. The first legal reference was stated as Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause two-twenty-one, and it's Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two I.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. In case I didn't say second, it was seconded by Mr. Bell. One twenty, yes for no. Article twenty-two, Ms. Beatty.
And this is another disabled veterans exemption. And this is a disabled veterans exemption related to the Hero Act. I move that the town vote to accept General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two J, which authorizes an increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause twenty-two, Clause twenty-two A, Clause twenty-two B, Clause twenty-two C, Clause twenty-two E, and Clause twenty-two F, by a hundred percent of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions in Clause twenty-two J, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, 2025.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twenty-three, yes, seven, no, motion carries. Article twenty-three is community preservation. We're gonna have Lynn Spencer, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, come forward and give us an overview of the committee's process and its FY 2026 grant recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and very glad to be here today. We have some work to do. There's a number of community preservation articles in front of us. But I'd like to give you a little bit of an overview and also make some important acknowledgements. Yes, I am privileged to chair this committee, but I am supported in so many ways by an outstanding committee consisting of Austin Antrim, Nancy Gutalma, Ellen Goldberg, Paul Spurne, and Dave Wilson. In addition, we have great support from Allison Nieto on the finance side of things, Kristen Taylor, and of course, Tony Barletta, Tony. We are also joined regularly in our meetings by our FinCom liaisons, Barbara Beatty and Deborah Warren. So, a little bit of history on community preservation and what it has meant for the town of Nahant and what it can do for the future. In 2004, the town meeting, in its wisdom, voted a three percent surcharge, which was part of the Community Preservation Act that had been passed by the legislature about three years before. That meant that there's a three percent surcharge on real estate tax. And then, the very early years, it was matched in full, a hundred percent, by the state match. The state matches are generated by, the fees generated by registering loans, deeds, and so on in the Registry of Deeds. And for many years, the legislature was also putting in a little bit more money. On average, our state match, while it has been dropping a little bit, but on average, our state match has been sixty-nine percent. Why has it dropped? Because so many towns and cities have joined community preservation. So, real estate needs to actually be active, and we've heard a little bit about how the town is contributing to that this year with the sale of the Coast Guard housing lots. But we still maintain a very healthy match from the state, and we do so with a lot of optimism. Since 2005, the first year of community preservation in Nahant, over fourteen million dollars has been spent in three categories of activity funded by this grant program: historic preservation, open space and recreation, and community housing. The town has, the town's contribution through its real estate surcheck, sur, surcharge has been $4.8 million. The match has been $4.7 million. And in addition, $5 million has been invested through other grant programs and matches. So, this has been a very healthy investment for the town and the care of its resources. Of that fourteen million dollars, forty-six percent has been spent on town-owned buildings. In fact, one of the benefits of what you're experiencing is the acoustics in this build, in this hall today, because that had funding from community preservation. In addition, thirty percent has been spent on open space. The town wharf has been a big beneficiary, Forty Steps, and so on. Thirteen percent on recreation. If you play tennis or pickleball, you're enjoying what community preservation has done for the town. And ten percent on housing. Only one percent of that fourteen million dollars has been spent on privately owned, eligible projects. So, it's been a huge benefit to the town of Nahant and its, its obligations and assets. So, with that, I will then turn this back to our moderator and the FinCom for the articles that you have in front of you. I will be a resource, as well as my committee as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer, and thank you to your committee. Mr. Van Der Slice, Article twenty-three A.
Twenty-three, twenty-three A. I move that the sum of $150,000 is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to replace the cedar shingle roof on the Nahant Life Saving Station.
Seconded by Mrs. Drayton. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. Ninety-seven, yes, twelve, no, motion passes. Twenty-three B, Mr. Van Der Slice.
Twenty-three B. I move that the sum of $40,000 is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to replace the four asphalt shingle roofs at thirty-nine through forty-one Spring Road, forty-three through forty-five Spring Road, forty-seven through forty-nine Spring Road, and fifty-one through fifty-three Spring Road.
Seconded by Mr. Mc Mackin, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twenty-one, yes, nine, no. Article twenty-three C, Ms. Beatty.
So, this is about the Bailey's Hill Ecological Restoration Project. I move that the sum of $39,345 is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to continue the Bailey's Hill complex ecological restoration work.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. Any discussion?
Yes, I have.
We have somebody coming up? Go ahead.
I'll just say very quickly, I encourage you to go over to Bailey's Hill. If you haven't, yes, Bea and I have walked it. And it's, it's really, it's, it's become a very wonderful part of our town. And so, I really strongly encourage you to go over there and to enjoy it. Thank you.
My name is Trish Aldrich. I currently am the Chair of the Open Space Committee. The write-up in the book is very good, but just to highlight a few things, this article is to continue the work that we began in the current year, and it's basically to continue the transformation of Bailey's Hill, removing invasive plants and installing native plants, both perennials and shrubs. We are proposing that two hundred native perennials and fifty native trees will be planted by an ecological management firm that has already done work at that site and is quite familiar with it and our pleasure to work with. Also, this is, has been a great cooperative project between the DPW and the Fire Department and CPC. And we really are very grateful to have the support of them, as well as the FinCom and the votes at town meeting. So, I urge you to support this important article.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twenty-eight, yes, seven, no, motion carries.
Do the fun ones. So, this is, I move that the sum of $50,000 is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to upgrade the Pleasant Street Playground.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice.
I just wanted to say that CPC and through you and your support funded a playground inventory project. And we've created somewhat of a, a mini playground capital plan that started with the Little Nahant Playground. Again, funded and supported by you through CPC funds allowed us to transform that park. Pleasant Street Playground is the next on the list. And currently, we're going through a Flash Road Recreation Master Plan process, also funded by the CPC. So, please support this, and if you can, you know, pay attention and get involved in the Flash Road Recreation Master Plan process as well. I'm sure that'll be the next one in the coming years. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One twenty-four, yes, twelve, no, motion carries. Article twenty-four F, Ms. Drayton.
Library repairs, this is a two-thirds vote. So, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $700,000 to pay the cost of additional library repairs, including the payment cost of incidental or related thereto. That to meet the appropriation, $200,000 is transferred from the water sewer meter capital account. And the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $500,000 under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fourteen, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter, I'm sorry, Chapter forty-four, not fourteen, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four B, or any other. and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four B, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. And further, that seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars is appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to pay debt service on the first year of borrowing.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. I identified this is twenty-three F, it's twenty-three E, and we need a two-thirds vote.
I do have a note here.
Yep, go ahead.
About the library trustees.
Not that I could stand in for the library trustees, but I've agreed to actually do my best. Can you, can you hear me? All right. So as you might recall or may want to indulge in, if you look at this record of community preservation funding, you'll see that over the years, various grants have been given to the library for, to address critical repairs, including the cost of the master plan, to assess the condition of the building and also to recommend changes and improvements to improve its ability to serve the community of Nahat. The library is one of the crown jewels of this, of this town. Built in eighteen ninety-five, it was, it was in fact, you know, the scion, if you will, of the original library. We, the smallest community in the Commonwealth, had, were the third to have a public library created in eighteen nineteen. Think about that, the third in this, in this entire Commonwealth. The library building that we have today is the scion, is a descendant of that original small library. It's a beautiful building, and I know many of you have attended programs, taken out books, had children's programs in this beautiful building. But like any building, including our town hall, time takes a toll. So slate roofs, historic masonry, leaded glass windows have all required care and maintenance. What we are now looking at is what we expect to be, based on the work of our historic architect, Richard Smith, the last phase of exterior repair and preservation work. It is addressing masonry issues, some flashing issues, all to keep the building weather tight. Those of you who have attended, you know, a program in the adult reading room have noticed leaking plaster. That's all the result of this sort of longstanding water penetration, which will be addressed with this, this appropriation. In addition, the library has its original knob and tube wiring. Any of you know what I mean by knob and tube? Yes, you have old houses, any of you. At the library open house, I tried to explain what it is, but in fact is the original eighteen ninety-five electrical wiring, the first building in Nahat to be fully wired, and it is in need of upgrading to contemporary electrical standards. In addition, our fire detection system is basically a residential system. It needs to be an addressable system so that a firefighter entering the building knows exactly where to go. Lastly, we have a two hundred amp electrical service. That is not enough for us to actually add a small refrigerator for the staff. It doesn't have it, it's just not enough. So we're looking at what it means in a sequence of operations to be able to add upgrades to the library to make it serve well the community and anticipate future needs. So you might well ask, as others have, well, what's next after this? So the library has undertaken to update the master plan that was created in two thousand nineteen. It's looking at what it means to be a library of, you know, this century and the next. And the library trustees have been wrestling with what the findings of that upgrade have been and are now working on their strategic plan to actually continue improvements to the library. Things like HVAC, we have an old steam heating system, there's no air conditioning, we have historic books and people who need to be able to be in that space and be comfortable. These will be part of the future, but you know, as it's, as it's now being developed by the library trustees, it's going to be part of a, a capital effort that will involve going out into the community and other sources to bring in revenues for those improvements. But for now, what we're looking at is expending seven hundred thousand dollars over the next year, year or so, under the direction of a historical architect who knows the building well, as well as an owner's project representative, so that, you know, there can be the cost control and schedule issues that need to be represented by the town. I thank you for this opportunity and I will be happy to answer any questions, particularly from you, Ken. Always.
This is my last time up here today, I promise.
No.
I have absolutely no quarrel with everything that you and everyone else has done with the library. It's, it's an astounding, beautiful building. It's a historical jewel. It's, the library, I agree, the library is a jewel of the town and it needs to be preserved. And as someone who owns an older house, that list will never end. There's always going to be something. My only question for this particular motion, this particular article, is the two hundred thousand dollars is being used from, or being proposed from free cash, which is not part of CPC, that's what it reads.
Yep, yep.
If that's not correct, then please clarify, but if it's free cash, that means it's not restricted to community preservation, it could be used for literally anything in town. So whether that be school or seniors or whatever. So my question is, why are we going outside of CPA funding to take that additional two hundred thousand?
I would like to defer to my betters. Who's my betters?
So this, this two hundred thousand actually isn't free cash. It's actually, it's that water meter capital account that we're funding it from. As, as we mentioned earlier, we were able to find a new revenue source to complete the meter project, which frees up that revenue to be spent on something else. So it's actually technically not free cash. I assume the, you know, the limitation of the, I guess, borrowing capacity through the CPC is a factor in why we are adding to that five hundred thousand with the use of this, with this funds.
So just to clarify, is that locked in as a capital, that two hundred thousand, does it have to be spent on capital because that's how it was originally taken when it was going to be spent for the water stuff? Or is it, like, what makes it not free cash at this point? And just to quote a former selectman, free cash isn't free. It's actually taxes that have been paid. So, yeah, why is it not free? I mean, why is it not available?
So it's, it's, free cash is technically the sum of underspent appropriations and over-generated estimated revenues from a previous fiscal year. This money was appropriated last year for the current fiscal year that we're in. So with this motion, what we're doing is we're using, we're shifting the appropriation of that, those funds for this purpose, so it'll be specific to the capital needs mentioned in the motion and in the article. It technically doesn't fall to free cash and then get recertified by DLS and then, you know, used for a new year. We're just shifting the money from that account into this account. I know that's a, it's a really hard question to answer simply, but it's technically just, it's not, you know, what, it once was free cash, it was appropriated into the meter capital account, now we're shifting it from the meter capital account into this project.
Just one follow-up, and this might be from Mr. Vandislice. Was there any other use for those, that capital funds for that, that amount, right? We're, we're adding on to existing community preservation funding, right, with stuff that is not community preservation. Was there no other use for that two hundred thousand in capital in this current year? Or would there be in the future, in, in next year, so hold it aside and not necessarily put in the library for now?
Well, we, we received a lot, I want to say over a million dollars of free, free cash use requests in this budget process. We had to say no to about seven hundred thousand dollars of them, and we prioritized this project because of the urgent need of making the library weather tight. Because the CPC has limited borrowing capacity, but the cost of the project exceeds that, we decided that we could use, you know, this money more efficiently towards this project.
And, and sorry, one more thing, I think someone's having, this two hundred thousand is not matched by the state, is that correct?
I'm Anne Spron, I live at thirty-six Maillus Road, and I'm Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees, and I speak in support of this motion. I'd first like to thank the members of the Board of Selectmen, Tony Barletta, Town Manager, members of the FinCom, who came to the library over the course of the last year to take a look at and appreciate the conditions that we are addressing with this article, and I thank them for the support. I would also like to thank the friends of the library for their support. We did a lot of homework before making this proposal to, for the money, the funds being proposed to be spent. We, the friends of the library accept contributions from residents and others for their building fund, and we took thirty thousand dollars from the building fund to hire the architect who did the current study, and to hire a mason to come in and do exploratory work to really make sure that we knew exactly what was wrong with the building that was leading to the peeling off of plaster from the walls and ceiling in the adult reading room and, and another room. So, so yes, thank you very much to the friends of the library. I also want to take this opportunity to invite you all to come to the library. The library is yours. And for those of you who have not been to the library in the past year or two, we have a wonderful set of books, for sure, including some extraordinary treasures, but we are also more than books, and we have something to offer every single person in this room. If you do crafts, we have a crafting circle. If you want to become a part of a book club, we have a book club. If you have children or grandchildren, bring your children and grandchildren or visitors to the children's activities. We are bursting at the seams with the kids' programming. If you are having problems with accessing information on the computer, our Adult Services librarian, Carol Wenziering, will help you on the computer in the library to access and find whatever it is that you need. So we are, we have museum passes. We also have a library of things. Are you interested in telescopes? We have a telescope you can borrow, believe it or not. So, so please, please come visit us. It's really, it's yours. It is probably the most beautiful building in Nahat, and it is your building. We have free coffee maker. So if you want to just come in and take a break and be in this beautiful, like, public living room, there's a coffee maker for you. You just put the pot in the slot and get your cup. Talk to the librarians. They have a whole brochure that tells you all of the things, all of the programs and resources you can get from our library. It's not just the books, you can get movies, you can get, for free. You can access millions of books through, through the library, through the libraries and a library loan borrowing. It's, it's an extraordinary place, and as I said, maybe you don't want to, maybe you want to read the newspaper. We have newspapers, we have magazines. They're right by the coffee shop, the coffee maker. And there are these really comfy chairs that you can sit in, in this beautiful space, and just come. Come and introduce yourself to the librarians and let them welcome you and help you with whatever needs you have. Thank you.
James Walsh, thirty-three High Street. I'd like to say a couple of things. One is that when I moved here on November twenty-third, nineteen seventy-three, one of the first places I went to in this town was the library. And I was a fairly regular. I walked in one day and the librarian said to me, "Oh, Mr. Walsh, I, I set aside a book for you because it's the kind of book that you like." Now, that's the kind of thing in a small town that, you're not going to get this in New York City. But most importantly, I would like to underline the fact that about a hundred yards down Pleasant Street, I don't know how many years ago, but there was a wonderful historic building, which some of you are familiar with, that caught on fire and burned to the ground. It was a magnificent building on a wonderful piece of land, and I remember this woman here to my left crying as she watched that building burn. Now, if we consider for a moment that we have an electrical system in that library that is from the nineteenth century, I think there's a real danger to this building and it should not be, it should not go forward. We should solve that problem and preserve this beautiful building.
Molly Conlin, one seventy-one Willow Road. Please call the question while we're young.
Yeah, the question's been called. We need a two-thirds vote. We'll let Jessica get it lined up. We're, we're voting on the question being called. One-thirty-two yes to seven no, so we're going to stop debate. So now we will move to the main motion, which is also a two-thirds vote. One-oh-two yes to nine no. Motion, Article twenty-three F, Ms. Traiten.
I move that the sum of ten thousand dollars is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues for administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. No discussion, seeing and hearing none, let's vote. One-seventeen yes to eight no. The motion carries. Article twenty-three G, Ms. Warren.
Motion twenty-three G, Revenue Set Aside Housing Reserve. I move that the town set aside three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from fiscal year 2026 estimated Community Preservation Fund revenues and transfer to the Community Preservation Fund Housing Reserve account for later appropriation.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 124 yes to 4 no. Motion carries. Article 23-H, or, yeah, 23-H, Ms. Warren.
Public Library Debt Service. I move that the sum of $51,945 is hereby appropriated from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation estimated revenues, and that the sum of $132,115.91 is hereby appropriated from the Community Preservation General Reserve for the payment of the debt service for the public library bonding authorized by the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16-C.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 122 yes, 5 no. Motion carries. Article 23-I, Mr. McMackin.
I move that the sum of $26,058.13 is hereby appropriated from the Community Preservation General Reserve for the payment of debt service for the public library town hall bonding authorized by the 2021 Annual Town Meeting under Article 21-E.
Seconded by Mr. Van der Slice. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 115 yes, 3 no. Motion passes. Motion 23-J, Mr. McMackin.
I move that the sum of $30,848.25 is hereby appropriated from the Community Preservation General Reserve for the payment of the debt service for the town hall cemetery bonding authorized by the 2022 Annual Town Meeting under Article 22-H.
Seconded by Ms. Straiton. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 119 yes, 2 no. Motion passes. Article 23-K, Mr. Van der Slice.
I move the town set aside revenues from fiscal year 2026 estimated Community Preservation Fund revenues for later appropriation, any, sorry, for later appropriation, any other amount not otherwise set aside or appropriated as aforesaid to be maintained in the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve account.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 118 yes to 2 no. Motion carries. 23-L, Mr. Van der Slice.
This is a long one. Here we go. I move that the town transfers unexpended fund balances authorized by prior town meetings to the Community Preservation General Reserve account as follows. A, $3 from unexpended fiscal year 2011 Community Preservation Funds for the Nahant Public Library Artifact Study to the Community Preservation General Reserve. B, $6,734.18 from the unexpended fiscal year 2016 Community Preservation Funds for the Nahant Life Saving Station Landscape Plan to the Community Preservation General Reserve. C, $1,591.74 from the unexpended fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Funds for the Nahant Public Library Furnishings and Artifact Study to the Community Preservation General Reserve. D, $29,333.33 from the unexpended fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Funds for the Nahant Public Library Preservation Project to the Community Preservation General Reserve. E, $4,763.43 from the unexpended fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Funds for the Ellingwood Chapel Door Restoration to the Community Preservation General Reserve. F, $29,950 from the unexpended fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Funds for the Open Space and Recreation Master Plan to the Community Preservation General Reserve. G, $17,000 from the unexpended fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Funds for the Dory Club Gangway and Floats to the Community Preservation General Reserve. H, $1,000 from the unexpended fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Funds for the Boulder Scramble at the Johnson School to the Community Preservation General Reserve, for a total of $90,375.68. This total is different from the total of $93,000, sorry, $93,754.38 originally stated in the article due to a clerical error that was discovered after the publishing of the Advisory and Finance Committee book.
Seconded by Mr. McMackin. Any discussion?
So, this is, this is taking unexpended funds from prior year's projects and recapturing them. Or, we started calling them clawbacks, but that sounded a bit ominous, so we'll stick with repurposing.
Seeing and hearing no other discussion, let's vote.
Sorry. Christine Johnson Lucio, 15 Foxel Road. It's more just a point of information. This money goes from, where, there, it was not expended, so it's going back to a general fund with CPC, correct? Question is, why are we able to use that for the free cash to help defer some of the cost in the future rather than borrowing from town free cash?
These are CPC funds and they have to remain in the CPC purview. It doesn't drop to regular, normal town free cash?
Correct, but if they have these general reserve funds, can they use that rather than borrow from the free cash from the town? The previous article, we gave $200,000 from the town of free cash to CPC, correct? Or to the trust?
Well, to...
To that article, to an article.
Yes, to that article.
So, my question is for future, not for today, for today's voting, but can that money be used for things that we just appropriated from town free cash? Just thinking that there are roads to be paved and other needs within the town that might be addressed.
Well, the answer is yes and no. Yes, they can be used for CPC applications and projects in future years. This money will stay with the CPC. No, it would not offset the money we just approved, but it will be available for future use just in the CPC program.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Jeff Lewis, 6 Elsworth Road, Nahant. Can you hear me?
Yep.
On that 200,000, I'm getting a little fuzzy on my accounting. Back in a prior year, we authorized spending $200,000 on water meters. We didn't. So, does that mean that this 200, technically, then, we didn't do it, that 200,000 goes into free cash? Are you now taking it out of free cash and having capital expenditure for the library for $200,000?
That's a previous question, so it's kind of outside of the scope of what we're discussing. I understand the question, it's just, we've...
I'm looking at it and saying, why is the town putting 200,000 into, into the CPC? And I don't think that's what's happening.
Yeah, but...
It's repurposing 200,000 of one capital expenditure to 200,000 of a second capital expenditure, and it just happened to be, I'm assuming that 200,000 is on general expenses on the budget and not in the CPC. Am I correct on that?
Think of the library project as being funded by a number of different sources. A portion of it comes from the CPC. A portion of it, 200,000, comes from that prior article. And there's, there's another chunk, I don't remember where the other piece of it comes from.
But is it on the, it must be in the regular budget, there must be a 200,000 line item saying that it's, no?
So originally, what we were proposing to do was, there was originally that, that Article 5, if you go back to Article 5, we were going to rescind the original article that was approved last year, that where we appropriated a portion of free cash in water and sewer retained earnings. We were going to rescind that, and then that would go back into retained earnings and free cash, which we would then reappropriate for these various needs, one of them being the library. Upon drafting the motions, we spoke with legal counsel, and there was worry about rescinding that article, having that money go back to free cash, having the Department of Revenue have to recertify that free cash so then we could appropriate it. There were going to be multiple steps. So instead of doing that, they advised us, since we had appropriated that free cash into this water sewer capital account, we could just transfer it out, and one of the uses is a 200,000 for the library.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try and get back to the article at hand. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. 122 to, yeses and 6 nos. The motion passes. We move on to Article 24, Mr. Bell.
I move that the, I move that the town vote to adopt amendments to Section 4.13 Table of Use Regulations and by inserting a new Section 15 Nahant Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Units of the zoning bylaw to address activities regarding protected accessory dwelling units as printed in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee at pages 46 through 50.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty, and I would like to ask that a member of the planning board come up to further discuss this article.
Thank you, Peter. I'm Sheila Hamilton, Chair of the Planning Board, 17 Kenny Ave. The planning board's recommendation may be found on page 25 and 26 of the warrant, and you can look at the appendix for the actual tracked article. What you see there in the tracked version has been back and forth between the Attorney General, the Executive Office of Housing Libable Communities, the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, and Tony Barletta, and the members of the planning board. And we've had several iterations, and what you see in the book is ready to go and is approvable by the AG's office. So I want you to know that this is very important. Just in general, this article is in response to the Massachusetts' growing housing shortage. Governor Mara Healy's $4.1 billion housing bill became law under the Affordable Housing Act in August of 2024. However, the rules and regulations were issued on February 3rd, 2025, with zoning reforms that allow accessory dwelling units to be built as a right throughout the Commonwealth. By right means that no town or municipality may deny a homeowner from constructing an ADU on a single-family zoned lot if they meet all the reasonable dimensional requirements. Under the new law, Nahant is not allowed to regulate ADUs by imposing special permit requirements for an ADU on a property, require any discretionary zoning approval for an ADU, require more than one additional parking space for an ADU, prohibit rentals of ADUs except for short-term rentals, impose owner occupancy requirements, and prohibit any unreasonable restrictions for ADUs. So what the town can allow is what we have within the bylaw that you see in your booklet. And what is allowed are size restrictions. Not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Short-term rental restrictions are not allowed as an ADU. Dimensional setbacks. We must be compliant with the current zoning district. We have R1 and R2. Height restriction is the same as the requirement, again, of the zoning district for R1 and R2. These are only single-family residential districts, again. May require one additional parking space, so we have, can have one parking space in addition to the required parking space of the principal dwelling unit. And then there's only one accessory dwelling unit on a lot. And the other reasonable restrictions which we've included is ownership may be held, may not be held separately from the principal dwelling unit. And utility hookups must pass through the principal dwelling unit and not as a separate setup through the public or private right-of-way. The planning board hopes that the townspeople understand the necessity to approve this new bylaw, Section 15 Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Unit bylaw, and the revisions of the Table of Use Regulations under Section 4.13. If this article fails, there will be no parameters to deny a building permit by the building inspector for an application for an accessory dwelling unit. Please vote in favor of this article. It is supported by the planning board and, I believe, all the town officials. Thank you.
Mr. Steinberg?
Oh, I have no further comment.
Oh. Okay.
Brendan Bronnichom said, 270...
Brendan Bronnikolmsted, 27th Street. In general, I don't have any major issues with the bylaws that are presented. I guess it's more implementation questions about 2G, about the all utilities servicing the unit. So is utilities, is that defined by Massachusetts' law, or is that defined by the town's zoning laws?
It is not by zoning, per se, except that we're requiring it within the Section 15.
Well, now, any more of the definition of what is utilities?
Utilities, water, sewer.
Okay. Because I, so the description that they'll pass through the principal dwelling unit, so that the ADU sewer line has to physically go through that, the primary unit, and then onto the street connection?
You would, you would start by the street that's already going into the primary building. The primary building now, on that lot, all water sewer connections will happen from that building.
Okay. And I guess then the other question was, I guess there's no restriction about metering? So, you know, the primary unit have its own meter, or the ADU can have its own meters?
Yes, and that would be Tony, and/or Zach, the DBW, could answer about the meters.
The town would keep record of the use of water through the primary structure meter. A resident could purchase a second meter for the ADU if they want to have the ability to measure how much water is being used by the ADU, but it won't be factored into how the town measures the total usage on the property and how we bill.
And about electrical meters? Can the, does the ADU have the electrical meter, or is the primary unit have the electrical meter for that ADU?
That you would have to consult with National Grid.
Okay. And I guess then, this is more of a, this is more of a future question. At some point, internet service may be considered a utility. Internet service, some people have wired, some people have wireless. If you have wired, it sounds like you'd have to physically run your service through the primary unit to then get to the ADU.
Again, again, that would be up to the, you know, for the town, for the intent of this language, we were really looking at water and sewer utility connection because of the cost impact to the town to, for, to connect to the sewer water main on the street, dig in the street, and those types of costs. So I think that would, I think that would be okay, as long as, you probably would have to connect to the primary building, but that's not really a Nahat zoning issue.
Yep, I understand. Thank you. I urge residents to support the bylaws.
Good afternoon. Josie Reese, 16 Navy Avenue. I know, I'm a little challenged here. Josie Reese, 16 Navy Avenue. I just want to say, I really commend the planning board for all the work that's on behind us. I know, because I've listened to it quite a bit. I too have a problem with the utilities, and I'd like to forward a motion respectfully to amend this particular document by getting rid of 2G and remaining silent or reserving it for utilities. So here is my plan, or my wish. So according to Article 1, anyone who asks for a motion that would cost anything to the town has to say, how is that going to be funded? I do believe, and we've discussed this, and I've heard it in discussion, that there will be potentially a tax implication for having an ADU on your property. So I think the additional costs that may or may not happen for any particular ADU requirement can be funded by those additional taxes. Another option could be that if a person wants to have separate utilities for whatever reason, and I have my own reasons for it, and I'll explain and give you a couple of examples, that they could, in the application process, be assessed an additional fee of some sort. So there's funding applications and different funding options for that. So I'm going to give you my personal example. I have a one-story garage in the back that's not being used. I would love to turn that into an ADU for my parents. However, in the future, when my parents move on and are all over here, right, I may want to go ahead and rent it to a person who really does need affordable housing because that's part of who I am. I do not want to have to segregate those meters and segregate that, because having been a renter early in my lifetime, when I was in college, if I had the utilities included, the heat went up, you know, the air conditioning went up. So that's a deterrent for me to want to rent to a stranger, right? The second thing is, is that I think that it could be argued that adding this additional requirement that is not currently in our zoning and is not currently required by the state law could be seen as an unreasonable requirement, that would discourage some people from having ADUs that have to go through additional work, of course, and then not others. And so I'm a proponent for trying to be as equal as possible across the board. So respectfully, I do ask that we look for an amendment to either reserve or eliminate that particular section. Thank you.
So-
Josephine Reese, 16 Navy Ave.
And we need to have your amendment in writing? Do we have a second on the amendment? We have a second. So we'll allow time for the amendment to be drafted. Okay. So the amendment is to remove or reserve Section 15.04-G utilities. May be an unreasonable new requirement, not in current zoning laws nor required by state. Additional cost to town can be funded by adding, adding, I'm going to say a fee, property taxes or special appreciation fee?
Application fee.
Application fee, all right, thank you. So-
I don't think we need to get a 2G.
Right, we don't, basically, the amendment is to remove or reserve Section G utilities.
Which, if you're following in your book, is on Page 48.
And the, and the, we have a second. Do we have discussion on the amendment? So we're looking for discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, let me, on behalf of the planning board, one of the objectives was to make this easy as possible to administer and to not create unknown liabilities for the town. When you open up services, there's a cost to that, and my understanding is it's five, it can run from $5,000 to $10,000, but you really don't know, because when you open up a service, different things can happen. And there's, you have to repave the streets. If we can avoid doing that, and it's not that much of an imposition, we want to do that. The other factor is, we had the Attorney General review our proposal, and they were fine with that approach. So in terms of limiting exposure to the town, it was a sense of the planning board that this was the best way to proceed.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay. No, we have, behind you are speaking on the amendment. Thank you.
If I had drafted the amendment, you would just expect, I would have made it a little griefer, and I would have just recommended that Section G be stricken. My concern is that you now, by adding that additional section, and I respect the work of the planning board, I served on that board for many, many years, and I understand the guidance that you're concerned that this could cause additional work or costs to the town, but if you're a homeowner, and like me, my home is on Harborview Road, it is a lot that's approximately 100 feet long, my garage is on Fox Hill Road, and I would like potentially to create an ADU in my garage, which currently has electrical services coming in from Fox Hill Road, and it could more easily have water coming in or sewer coming in from Fox Hill Road, and I'd be inclined to pay for that. I encourage you to drive down Fox Hill Road. The town and the utilities have been working on that road, and much of it has some new pavement, but I assure you, there are a couple of spots, if I were to dig up, that would benefit by new pavement. It hasn't happened all across the street. So my concern is what you're creating by adding that section without any recourse for homeowners like me, who might have a garage or a space of land where they could build an ADU, you're creating a situation where I am not going to have to run my water and sewer from my house on Harborview Road, down estimated 60 feet to get to my garage. And I would rather just bring it in potentially from Fox Hill Road. So I'm not entirely opposed to what you're asking to do and have that limit, but there are going to be cases in this town where people will be prohibited from developing an ADU with this section of this bylaw because of the costs involved if they, like me, have a space of land to build an ADU or have a garage that's on a completely separate street.
Go ahead, Brendan, if you want to say something, go ahead.
In general, I would urge us to look down this change. I think maybe we could amend the original text, maybe include something about the ability for a property owner to request a variance or a special permit, that you would maybe give people an option other than kind of removing this restriction. I do feel this restriction is beneficial to put a lid on excessive development that we, to a degree, fear. The single connection can be addressed, I think, with a special permit, so I would urge to down vote this change.
Brendan, to your point, a special permit would be inappropriate in this situation, just so you know, it'd be more of a variance toward situation. But in a broader spectrum, this motion is only to remove Section 1504, 1502-G, or to subsection G. It's only to remove it, not to amend it, just to remove that subsection, that's it.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Just on the amendment?
I still have one little question after this, but I think, I'm just going to say that it seems to me the thought and effort and getting the approvals of all the appropriate institutions in order to know that this, as presented to us, that it meets everybody's approval, it seems to me that that's an enormous benefit. The tract changes, thank you very much, made it really easy to follow what was going on, and I would, you can speak better than I, but I would hesitate to make a substantive change like this at a time when it has gone through such a process.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Call question, please. It's too late for being young.
You keep sending her up here, don't you? It's, it is my prerogative as the moderator. I don't feel that there's been enough discussion at this point. I would like to continue the discussion, and I would like to, you know, impart my prerogative to allow discussion to continue, since we've only had essentially two speakers on the, on the, on the amendment. So we, I'm still taking debate on the amendment.
So again, I heard Mr. Bronnikolmsted talk about creating a special permit so that utilities for the ADU would not have to go through the main dwelling. Again, that creates a second class of ADU applicants. It creates a system where certain applicants would be required to go through this town process for utilities, and they might incur additional costs in constructing their ADU. So if it is necessary at this time, I would simply offer an amendment to the amendment that simply strikes G, that all utilities must be provided through the principal dwelling, and/or may be provided through separate independent utility connections where it would be cost prohibitive to provide them through the main dwelling.
So now we have an amendment to the amendment. We need, do we have a second on the amendment to the amendment? What's that? We have a second.
It says that Massachusetts can moderate on the issue.
He is not, he can't do what?
He can't veto. Show it to, show it to the attorneys, come here.
So we have an amendment to the amendment. This amendment says, "All utility services..." The first amendment was to strike Section 15 dot 06-2G. And this is, which... That was based on utilities. This is "All utility servicing a PDU must be provided through principal dwelling or where cost prohibited, be provided through separate independent utility connections." I'm sorry, 1504. So, do we have discussion on the second amendment? If you're not going to speak on the second amendment, please stand to the side.
Hi, my name is Shannon Bianchi. I live at 14 Harborview Road. I'm a former member of the Planning Board and the author of this ADU bylaw. I speak to the two folks out of the 120 of us that would like... That seem to want special accommodation because of their particular lot and where the structures on their lot are. I did not seek to add this specific language in here for a very small percentage of Nahanters. This is for the betterment of the town as a whole. I do apologize if there's folks that are not able to do an ADU based on these particular bylaws. But we... And I wrote... Well, the Planning Board and I specifically wrote this with the intention of protecting the town of Nahant from unwanted development. And if I may speak just another minute, Mr. Moderator, I didn't want to write this bylaw. I feel like this is an overreach from the state. I feel like it's a violation of my Fourth Amendment, Massachusetts State Constitutional rights. But I wrote it because it's my line in the sand. I was bound by duty in my service to the community to do so. Now that I'm not a member of the Planning Board, I want to speak from the heart and let you guys know that I did a lot of work on this and that it was my duty to do so. So thank you very much, and I do not support either amendment. Thank you.
Is anyone speaking on the second amendment? Ms. Reese?
Indeed, I have. Josephine Reese, 16 Babyu Avenue. And I know this... Josephine Reese, 16 Babyu Avenue. So I am not concerned with minorities of folks. I'm concerned about fair and equal treatment. Okay? I'm concerned about creating a law that treats people differently. So for me, a special variance seems like an easy way to do this. But in my mind, it's contrary to a law that was passed by the state. And quite frankly, I'm not crazy about it either. But since we do have to put something in writing, and we have agreed as a community to put something in writing in our zoning laws, I want it to be as fair and equal across the board as it can be, whether it's one individual or 100 individuals, does not matter to me. I don't want to create or vote for any law that violates the quiet enjoyment of someone's property, nor do I want to support or write any law that treats individuals differently based on the same law. And so that's where I'm coming from. I may choose never to do an ADU, and that's okay. That's my right. But I just think that it seems to favor or discourage one against the other. And I just really hope that as a community that we try to treat all of our folks with as much independence and as much fair and reasonable as we can. Thank you. So I do not like the word on the Second Amendment that says prohibitive costs. From a legal perspective, to me, prohibitive cost is not... It's a subjective thing. So thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. A new title. Speaking on the amendment to the amendment, I think it's getting a little too confusing. I think we should keep it simple. The First Amendment, which just strikes that section of the bylaw, is very straightforward from the town's perspective. We did put a lot of thought into this. But it is not a... It's not going to be a major issue if we strike that section of the law of the proposed article. I would urge you to not overcomplicate this with the Second Amendment, and vote that one down, and then just vote on the First Amendment. The owner of the property will end up bearing the cost of the connection. It does add an administrative burden to have to start, you know, metering a number of new services for the town. But there will be potentially new revenue generated by the taxes of the ADU. We don't... We did not put this in here as a way to limit development. We do feel that this law does provide a lot of residents the opportunity to stay in Nahant and downsize. There's a lot of value that the ADU brings you as residents. So again, you know, I don't think that that Section G is a deal breaker in any way. I would just urge not to overcomplicate it. Vote down the second amendment to the amendment, and then just, you know, take up that First Amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Can I call a question again?
Yes, in this case, you can, because there's no one standing in line. So the question has been called. So we have to vote on calling the question. So we are voting on calling the question or not. Please vote. And this is a majority vote. No, I'm sorry, two-thirds. 98 yeses and 16 noes. The motion to indefinitely... Yeah, the motion to cutoff debate is approved. So now we're going to the amendment. The second... Yes, I'm sorry, the Second Amendment. Let me read the Second Amendment. "All utilities servicing a PADU must be provided through the principal dwelling or where cost prohibited, be provided through separate independent utility connections." So that is the Second Amendment. Seeing no further discussion, well, let's vote. 98 noes to 17 yeses. So that one does not carry. And my pen broke. Now we are going to... Yes, please. We are going to the First Amendment. This amendment is essentially to remove or reserve Section 15 dot 04-2G. So we have 33 yeses and 79 votes... 79 noes, so the Second... The First Amendment fails. That one is a simple majority. So now we're back to the original question. Without amendment. I'm going to read it again. "I move that the town vote to adopt amendments to Section 4.13 Table of Use Regulations, and by inserting a new Section 15 Nahant Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Units of the zoning bylaws to address activities regarding protected accessory dwelling units as printed in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on pages 46 to 50." Further discussion on the main motion?
I just had a simple question. The way it's written, it says this applies to auxiliary dwelling units that are separate structures. I had it circled, and now I can't find it. But it says something about separate structures on the lot. So is this... If somebody has, like, a basement that they want to turn into an in-law front or something, is that a completely separate issue from this?
One of the...
No, it's not. This applies to detached and sort of included protected use.
I was just curiosity.
So you can put your basement into a protected ADU?
Yes.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, yep, that is now 55 Colby Way. I move to call a question?
I'll accept it this time. We've had a lot of discussion. So we now have a vote to call the question. Let's vote. What's that? Oh, do I have a... I'm sorry, do I have a second for the calling the question? 106 yes to 9 no. The question's been called. Now we will address the main motion. This is a two-thirds.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
94 yes, 12 no. The motion carries. Article 25, Mr. Bell.
Excuse me? One second. I just want to thank everyone. And I want to say that, based upon the discussions that have occurred today, there may be amendments coming forward for looking at and talking about that Section G. The Planning Board's going to be very busy. We have to deal with another law, Chapter 3A, MBTA. And so we will... Might be calling a special town meeting in the fall, and we could possibly address this issue also. So thank you very much for today's vote.
And thank you, committee. Article 25, Mr. Bell.
Actually, if you'll notice in the book, the Advisory and Finance Committee is advising that we will review the entire zoning bylaw. It hasn't been reviewed overall in many, many years. Article 25, we're almost done. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Sections 14 and 15, and to any other applicable authority to abandon one or all of the drainage easements and/or other municipal easements on the properties known and numbered as 3, 5, 7, and 9. Christopher Drive.
Seconded in by Ms. Warren. Any discussion on the motion? 106 yes, 3 no. Motion carries. Ms. Beatty. Article 26.
I think this is our last motion. Yes? So this is about continued committees. I move that the town continue the following standing committees to June 30th of 2026. Community Preservation Committee, Cable TV Advisory Committee, Veterans Memorial Committee, Sailing Committee, Cemetery Advisory Committee, Coast Guard Design and Development Advisory Committee, Town Charter and Bylaw Committee, Tennis Committee, Town-Owned Land Study Committee, Nahant Alternative Energy Committee, Golf Course Management Advisory Committee, Cultural Council, FEMA Flood Insurance Study Committee, Green Community Committee, MVP Committee, and Noise Abatement Committee.
Seconded by Ms. Strayton.
Did I skip one? What? What? Oh, okay.
So you'll notice that there were three committees in the article that Barbara did not read. The Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. That in a town meeting in 2023, Article 22, established the Open Space Committee into the town general bylaws. So it doesn't need to be continued by this body. She also didn't mention the Nahant Fire Station Architectural Assessment Committee. That committee has been replaced by the Public Safety Designer Selection Committee, authorized by the Board of Selectmen. And she also didn't mention the Short Term Rental Committee. That article... That committee was created by town meeting in 2021. And it stated the committee shall dissolve on June 30th, 2024, or upon completion of two tasks, drafting bylaws and presenting them to a future town meeting. Both those tasks have been accomplished, and that date is passed. So those three committees are not included in the motion.
Discussion?
Brendan Holmstead, 27th Street, anchorage residents to support this article. I do again ask the town to consider looking at funding a grant writer to support all the departments and the committees within the town to seek funds from state, feds, and even NGOs.
With the...
State your name.
Naaman. Carter Smith, 25 Pleasant Street. I want to talk about, we were talking about the Airbnb. If you do have an ADU, you can... Do an ADU, an ADU, move into it an Airbnb. And that would change how Airbnb is done. And I've been doing the Airbnb for 11 years.
Excuse me, but where... The article that we're discussing right now is committees?
This is about the ADU.
Yep, we've moved on from that. We've moved...
Is that closed?
Yeah, we closed that article. We voted on that article.
Mr. Administrator, the Memorial Day Committee was not mentioned in any of the...
The Memorial Day Committee is part of our general bylaws, so it doesn't need to be continued by this body on an annual basis.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's make our final vote of the day. Seeing and hearing none, let's make our final vote of the day. 100 yeses to 2 nos, the motion carries. I want to thank everybody for coming. Seeing as there's no further business in front of this meeting, I declare it dissolved. Thank you.